Well, called order the Louisville Town Council meeting for May the 9th, 2013. Certainly want to welcome all to tonight's meeting. If you trust that if you haven't already, that you'll see that there are agenda, written, printed agendas of tonight's meeting on the table at the rear. I'd like to pick one of those up and follow along. We have, as is our custom, I will call the role of council by introducing each of our council members to you. To my immediate right is our Mayor Pro Tim Sandra-Mogg, followed by Councilman Ed Smith, and then Councilman Fred Brink. To my left is Councilman Robert Cream, Councilman Tom Lawson, and Councilman Jeff Stewart. As always, we will have our staff with us, and as always, our town manager will actually lead us through the agenda. Town Manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney, Beau Hout, our town clerk is Ms. Joyce Walker, our assistant town manager and finance officer is Ms. Kathy Bruce. Also having attendance, our planner, Marty Myers, excuse me, Marty, and Manning, or I guess administering to the camera is our public information officer and events coordinator, Liam Hall. Do have the press with us tonight, Representative Mrs. Cruz, welcome, and certainly again, welcome to all of our citizens for your attendance tonight, too. This meeting, as you probably have known, is being recorded for playback on our government channel six this following week. So, we welcome the citizens that are watching and participating in this matter. Council, we have the agenda before you, and I think it's as was approved at our briefing session. I don't think there are any changes, are there? So, if you look over it, and if you have any questions or comments, we'll hear those at this time. Not entertain a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
Sir, move.
Do we have a second? There's no questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have approved the agenda for tonight, and we'll start with the manager leading us through the consent agenda.
Okay, tonight's consent agenda consists of seven items. The first is Resolution 2013-016 for the acceptance and approval of the monthly financials for March 2013. Second item is the approval of council briefing action minutes from April 4th, 2013. The next item is the approval of council budget minutes from April 8th, 2013. Next item is the approval of council regular meeting minutes from April 11th, 2013. Next item is the approval of council budget minutes from April 15th, 2013. Next item is approval of council budget minutes from April 22nd, 2013. And last, on the consent agenda items, approval of council budget minutes from April 29th, 2013. The minutes are, have been included in your package for review.
Very good, thank you. Council, are there any questions of the manager on any of the items that make up the consent agenda for tonight's meeting? We did cover these in the briefing session. So, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Is there no further discussions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the likes, I don't know. The consent agenda passes. Thank you. Next item?
The next section, presentations and proclamations. Under consent proclamation, there are none this evening. Under presentations, there are also none this evening. Moving on to the next section's public forum.
Okay. This is the first of two opportunities that we have in tonight's agenda for members of the public to come forward to address council. It could be on any subject, either in tonight's agenda, or anything else that might be on citizens' matter. So, I don't have anyone that have signed up, but if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Mike Horn, 1125 Fall Road Lane in Louisville, 27023. I think I've probably communicated with most of you over the last several weeks about the budget process and the thoughtful manner in which you all have approached it. I want to tell you that I do appreciate the deliberations that you've had and the thoughtful discussions that I believe you've had. I spent a little time after Monday evening going back and reading our comprehensive plan a little bit, and we talked about greenways, and we talked about sidewalks, and we talked about preserving community care, and we talked about safe neighborhoods, and we talked about a great vision that we have for Louisville. And then I compared with the budget that I heard discussed on Monday night, and I don't see any of those things happening, unfortunately. I see a not funding of critical capital reserves that allow us to continue to do the progressive things that we have in Louisville. Mr. Mayor, I think you and several others talked about, you had done an informal poll among people about the budget and the tax rate, and I kind of said, well, let me go out and do my informal poll. And I talked to 25 or 30 of my neighbors, and I said, what would you prefer to have? Funding for sidewalks, funding for greenways, funding for the things that we all live in Louisville for, or would you rather have another 75 cents a week? I didn't get one person, Mr. Mayor, who said, he needs 75 cents. They all said, do what we've been doing at Louisville to make this community the kind of community we're proud of. So, I asked you all to please take another look at that budget. Please fund the things that are important to this community. Fund the things that make Louisville the place that it is, because if you don't fund them this year, it's going to be tough to fund them next year. You're robbing Peter this year, paying Paul this year, to rob Peter next year. So, thank you very much. Again, I appreciate all the things that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? We do have forums available at the rear chamber where written comments could be submitted if you prefer that method. Having no one else, we will close the first public forum and go to the next item.
Okay. The next section is purchases and contracts. There are none for consideration this evening. Reports and/or committee appointments, there are also none this evening. Old business, there is no old business for consideration. Public hearings, there are none scheduled for this evening. And unfinished business, there are also no unfinished business scheduled. The next section is new business. We have item A, the LTCR 2013-001, expansion of building located at 206260 Shallowford Road. This is Resolution 2013-019, site plan review for 6260 Shallowford Road, extending the building by 10 feet and enclosing and renovating the existing kennel area by adding heat. Current zoning is PB, no setback requirements. Project meets all standards of the inspections department, all materials consistent with the existing structure, and it has been approved by the planning board at their meeting on April 10th, 2013, and recommended to the town council for their review. Mr. Myers is here this evening, is the planning director. If you have any questions concerning this matter.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Well, any comments for, any questions for Mr. Myers concerning the side of the business?
The only question I've got is should we take it as a resolution and also with the site plan conditions are two separate? Those are our society, I understand.
Right, there are some side.
I don't think the resolution speaks to the site plan conditions so that would be separate, so it would be too separate.
I'd like to motion to approve the resolution, 2013-019. Same.
Any further discussion? We have covered the sound. Okay, there are no questions. Call for all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that resolution passes. Now, the site plan.
And the next item would be the council's considerations of those site plans, the site plan conditions located in your package.
Motion to approve.
Any further questions or comments by council? All in favor of the site plan conditions, please say aye. Any opposed? The site plan also passes along with the resolution.
Item B, Resolution 2013-017. This is setting the public hearing for comments on the 2013-2014 fiscal year budget. Resolution passed would set the public hearing for next month on June 13th.
All right, any question or comments from council on the resolution setting the public hearing for next month's meeting?
I have a comment. After thinking about it, after we left Monday night, you know, I'm not sure we're completely ready for this. You know, we had a consensus on the tax rate. It was not unanimous. We had a consensus, but it seemed to me on the budget side, the expenditure side, I should say, that we didn't, and we had a list of things we were going to go over, we earmarked a bunch of them, but we actually never did that. As I thought about this after, after we left, you know, and I think Mr. Horn's point is excellent, is one of the reasons that Louisville's been able to keep that tax rate at that level for so long is because it's had its reserve funds, so when stuff came up, it's able to move. And so, I'm just questioning, you know, whether we should be maybe getting together one more time and taking a look at that. I know we earmarked, everybody took notes and earmarked a bunch of stuff. I'd really like to hear what people have got to say. I'd like to see if there's a way that we can go ahead, excuse me, go ahead and fund some of that stuff and get us more on the same page with everything. And I just think we really know that this is a tough budget year, we're trying to fill a hole, and it's a tough, tough economy. Our citizens have had some struggles. I said we owe it to them to really, to go after it. And I looked at that list, and I think you made, Mr. Mayor, and it had like eight items on it. We really only got partially into the first one, I think, so those are my thoughts.
Actually, I think the procedure that we used, yes, I did put forth some, or earmarked some of the line items throughout the budget, and when we, I guess it was the meeting before last, and I forget the dates, it was on Mondays, I do remember that, but that list had been given to our manager and to the finance director to incorporate into the two, I guess, budgets that actually came forward to us. So, I think that was really taken care of.
It seems to me that the only thing we did is, on the expenditure side, was talk about travel expenses and really didn't get down. I know whenever I was sitting, I could see a lot of folks taking notes as we went over that stuff, and we never went back through it, and so I don't know that we're prepared. I think we need to get back together again and go over it, and I would, then I'm willing to put a motion on the floor to say that, you know, we need to hold this and get together one more time and go over this and really take a look at what we can do. I think we need to get that stuff funded. We're going to be in a situation where that's going to bite us later. I absolutely agree that that's what's going to happen.
I understand you want to get together again, but we still have to set the public hearing date, so you can still.
You said to your 20-day notice, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
Right, well, it's, my, my, my notice is May 10th, that's 50 days.
But we have to have so many days within when it has to be noticed in the paper. That's all I'm saying, so.
That's 20, right?
It's between 20 and 25.
Okay, seems like we've got plenty of time.
By statu-, yes, by statute, so we, that's the reason why we set it. Now, you can go into that date and you can postpone, given your results, you know, until sometime up to June 30th, but we still need to set a date that needs to go into the newspaper. And so, I'm just, you know, pointing that out.
You can still have all the meetings you want to have to discuss budget items. This is just set public hearing for consideration of whatever budget is to be considered at that eve.
And you're also free to consider changes after you've had the public hearing as well in order to be able to incorporate comments that you hear at the public hearing.
Well, I'll make a motion then that we go ahead and advertise this, that we get together on this Monday night and kind of get back over those items and see if we can hash out. That's my motion.
Forward, before you make that, or it's accepted, I think we should separate the, your basic motion of wanting additional deliberation from the actually setting of the public hearing for the budget itself.
Well, I hear what he's saying, and I think he wants to assure that there's some additional conversation, and he makes a good point. We, the staff did a great job of taking the things that we had talked about and consolidating, putting them into the budgets, but that doesn't build a consensus, and you know, I think there were some more things that I would have liked to, and I know Sandra was touching on some things, and we got talking about travel a little bit, we got into a few things, but, and Fred made some good points. I would like to pursue it a little bit further, see, it really sounded, to one point, when Sandra said to me, I'll go halfway with you on one item. That was an intriguing discussion for me, so I would agree with Jeff that if there's some way that we can, see if we can have a little more discussion about this before, whether that means postponing setting the public hearing, or whether that means we can agree to do that.
A little higher choice in setting the public hearing.
Well, we have to set one, but we wouldn't have legally, I don't think we have to set it tonight. I think.
There's enough time to just have. Here's, I guess, the concern with the, you're having a meeting, I mean, you're going to meet with your, I mean, you may have some more budget discussions, and perhaps Mr. Zander would want to make a motion first to set some other hearings for further discussion about the budget, and then still tonight, make the motion to set the public hearing. You've got, you've got 30 days approximately to work with him and get your budget going, and if you see, even on the night of the public hearing, that you need to push it out, you can actually get that done later in June. We need to have it, you know, by June 30th, you've got to have a budget, that's statutory. So, you can get so far as you could have however many meetings you might need to have to discuss the budget program, have a public hearing at least initiated on the item that's proposed in the resolution, and then even if you don't, aren't ready to pass the budget that same evening, just got to get done by June 30th, you've got some additional time. This is mostly to create a sufficient timeframe for the required statutory notice on the hearing. There's lots of more discussion that you still have.
And again, you are allowed by design to make changes to the budget even after you've had the public hearing, because if you weren't allowed to do that, then there wouldn't be much point in having someone have and give you public comment at a meeting if you were unable to make changes regarding the budget subsequent to that public hearing. So, you can have a public hearing, but you are not required to take a vote on the budget either that night on that budget, or even that same budget. You can make modifications after you've had the public hearing.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
If, if, let's set a meeting for next Thursday, pick a night randomly. If, that would have to be an advertised meeting, right? All right, so if that was a meeting, could the public hearing not be set at that meeting? As long as it's a public, as long as it's a public.
Louisville Town Council, other stuff. I think it was a 20 to 25 day notice.
Yeah, but he was asking about advertising for the next meeting. As long as you make that notion tonight, that you want to have an additional meeting, and we say it in an open meeting, I don't have to do a newspaper ad. I can just do, you know, special meeting call and send it out the way that I've been sending out special meetings, setting a call. But, you know, basically, we usually advertise for the budget a certain way, and we usually have things on the calendar. It's a calendar that we, I think it fell over. I think the budget calendar actually calls for, you know, setting the public hearing for a certain night, so that's already out in the public, and they will be expecting that you either have a public hearing tonight, it's on the calendar out there, or they will see something that changes that date as we move along.
If you have a choice, or if it wouldn't, setting that public hearing won't eliminate your opportunity to have further budget.
Okay, well, split the motion, and I'll make a motion, and we get back together and look at this expenditure side of the budget one more time than Monday night, since we've already been x-ing those out, we'll work fine. So, I'll make a motion if we do that this Monday night, and try to get a greater consensus among the council.
And then proceed with the public hearing. He said we need two separate motions, so that's the first one.
All right, I'll second it. Any further discussion?
I want to be clear on what we're voting on right now, and that is just, that is strictly to get together this Sunday, Monday night.
Yes, sir.
A lot are going to be out of town all last week, so I'm not going to be here. I truly thought that we had set the budget this past Monday night. I'm very disappointed to hear that something did not think that we did. I, for one, do not see any reason to have further deliberation on this, and I think it's time to draw a mark in sand and move forward. That's my opinion.
Dan, didn't you think that there were people that still?
I know there were people in opposition, but the majority were for the budget that we established at 17.7.
Well, I don't think we're talking about the, I don't think.
Not only that, but the budget that was presented that came along with that 17.7, I thought that there was a consensus and a majority of the council that approved that. Am I wrong?
Well, I don't know that it was just people in opposition, Dan. The one I keep going to is, I really felt I was interested in what Sandra was saying, and she got.
But we've been, I understand that, but we have been waiting for how long? Five weeks over this. And how long, much longer can we draw that? Possibly draw that?
Well, I voted motion down. I mean, I just, it looks to me like all we did.
I'm not calling for a vote, and I'm just.
It looks like to me that all we did is cut $8,500 and robbed savings to pay for stuff. I mean, I just don't think that that, you know, we didn't have an opportunity to really deliberate. That's all we did. I mean, we could have done that the first night, skipped all the rest of them.
Having more discussion doesn't do any, I don't see the downside at all. I mean, people still, the people that support it, will still, there's still going to be a vote on this budget at one point. I don't, I don't know that.
Well, it's majority council, you know, and we'll take a vote.
But I'm concerned now, if you're going to be out of town, is there?
I'm going to be out of town until Monday week, and so.
Well, maybe, maybe it should be when, I think definitely, Dan, you know, would want, would need to be there for that, but I certainly think if Jeff is interested in that, I think it would be a good idea as well. I just think that there was things that could.
Maybe it takes us nowhere different, but maybe it does. You know, I'm just, I'm just a firm believer in people being able to vet until they're, until they're happy with, you know, what they're, what they're going to vote on.
I have to, I have to agree that, to me, when we voted with a 5-2 vote, we voted to keep the tax rate at 17.7, we voted on the proposal, we had two proposals before us that night. I'm not disagreeing that we had a conversation, but we kind of had that conversation, in my view, after we'd already kind of done that, I think, if I remember correctly. And to me, what did we agree to hold a tax rate on, Bill and I? What, I mean, we had a document.
And somebody, I don't know who made the comment, but somebody when we did that in our room made the comment, we have consensus on a tax rate, but we don't have consensus on the, on the expenditures. I don't know who it was, but someone made that comment when we went down there, and said, we did vote on the tax rate, because we asked specifically, we want to keep that. We didn't have, it wasn't unanimous, but we had consensus on it.
But we had two, we had two proposals in front of us, two budgets, one at 17.7, one at 19.3, and we voted to 5-2 to stay at 17.7. To me, I thought that was clear. I'm not disagreeing. We did have conversation, kind of, to me, kind of post after that, if I remember right. My memory's getting kind of foggy, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what, you know, we sent the manager and the finance officer away last week to put together two proposals for those two factors, and then we came back and voted on that, and that's what we voted on. We didn't take a vote.
Yeah, I didn't, I remember.
No vote taken. Usually, turn a lot of.
Yeah, there was no vote taken, that's right.
There was a consensus asked around the table, and it was by.
It was 17.7. It was not for how the budget was put together, just that we were going to stay at that tax rate.
I don't, I don't.
I'm wrong.
But we have a motion and have a second. Any further discussion?
Tom, you second. You suggested the possibility of rescheduling back to a different.
The first available, I think, was up to Jeff's motion, right? Yeah, I'm first available time, but Dan is ready. If he wanted it the Thursday that he's back, that would be, I think, the 23rd, which I'm fine with that, from now, that's a motion.
Is it clear?
No, I won't get any more, it's not working on.
We're voting to get, get together to go over the expenditure side of the budget, want, to try to get a better consensus on what we're doing. We had a consensus on the tax.
Only the first available Monday night.
Well, are you available a week from Monday, Dan? Or are you?
I possibly could get back in time, but I'm not for sure.
So, it was either that Monday, the 20th, or the Thursday, the 23rd?
I'll definitely be back for the 23rd.
That's what the council wishes. The, you understand that? So, basically, your motion is to re-adjourn council for deliberations on the budget. You talk, the expense side, if only?
That's what I'm talking about, is the expense side, is that we didn't have a whole lot of time to take a look at it. It seemed like we had a, but we didn't have, you know, it wasn't unanimous, but we did have a consensus on the, on the tax side, we did not on the expenditure side.
And you know, I think part of it, for me, too, when, once the decision was made, I really wasn't, wasn't bothered by the fact that that was, that seemed to be at the time where the consensus was, but as I mentioned that night, once that seemed to be where we were going, for me, that opened up some additional, I had a different set of questions under that tax rate than I would have had under a revenue neutral tax rate. It becomes, for me, a little bit different, and there were a few questions I had, but you know, I'm not, I don't hear Jeff trying to change, you know, or questions that there was the consensus on what we had talked about as far as the rate, but I think, I think he is correct, and that clearly there are, there may be some folks that want to ask a few more questions, and it's an important thing.
The budget is a little left, that's an important thing to do.
I would suggest that in this motion does not be defined to strictly break the expenditure side. We have to have a balanced budget. Anytime you're talking balanced, expenditures and revenues must equal out, so I don't know how you can talk about expenditures without talking about revenues also, so, you know, I recognize that the expenditure side is what you really want to talk about, but don't limit discussions.
Well, I'm fine with being on both. I just think that, for me, I just felt like, starting to think about it this week, I just felt very unsettled about the expenditure side, so I'm fine with just taking one more shot at it, and in all fairness, you know, we had three budgets handed to us on Monday night, boom, boom, boom. Take a look, take a look, take a look, and then let's get it done, and so I think it'd be great if we could come back, bring that one that we had, and bring your notes, everybody earmark stuff, and let's get in there. We can hammer it up fast, we don't have to take forever on it, but let's look and make sure we're doing the best for the Louisville taxpayer.
All right, so that's the motion, I had it second, so I'm. So, the motion is to meet on May 23rd time?
6:30, right here.
For purpose of council budget discussions.
Yeah.
Everybody clear on what this motion is? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Yep. Okay. Uh, did you get that? Maybe we'll have to show a hand.
Who's writing?
I'm sorry?
I was writing, yes.
Okay. Uh, opposition, both myself and Councilman Green. Okay, the next is to set the public hearing for, for the budget itself for the public.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
I'll set the.
Any further discussion needed on that? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That then is set for June the thirteenth at seven-thirty, as far as a part of our agenda for the meeting of, of June thirteenth. Beginning at seven-thirty. All right? Next item?
Okay. Uh, let me get it here. Yes, next item is Resolution two zero one-three-zero-one-eight, accepting the resignation of Deb Gachal from the Louisville planning board.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second it.
Uh, how many years did Ms., Ms. Gachal serve on the planning?
Only four.
Only? That's a lifetime. A bit of spending war?
Some, some of those were weekly meetings, most of them.
Marty has a little bit of hair when he's in this.
That's right.
Okay, um, we have the motion to accept the resignation. Now, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That resolution, uh, number eighteen for two thousand and thirteen passes. Next item?
Okay. The next is administrative reports. Under A, we have upcoming events at Shoutford Square in Hound Holidays. On, on the eleventh, we will have our first concert. That is The Invaders. They'll be playing in the, in Shoutford Square. On the twenty-seventh, we will be observing Memorial Day holiday. And then on the, also on the twenty-seventh, there will be a, an American Legion observance of Memorial Day holiday as well, or Memorial Day as well. And then on the thirty-first, we will have a play. I think that's something to do with Charlie Brown.
I've seen that one. Something to do with Charlie Brown.
Sorry, I might be, I didn't get the title right.
That's close.
Yes, and that already was sent for, for this month.
Any questions of the, the manager or, or events coordinator on the events that are scheduled for the town? Okay, we'll go to the next item.
Okay, under, the next item is our manager's report. We have a stage update. I want to let Kathy first, please.
If you recall, we discussed previously about renting a facility owned by the church, Louisville Baptist Church. And spoke with Mr. Green, and he went back to the church. And we made, the documents you have in front of you, we made an offer at about a hundred dollars in rental. And with either party having ninety days in advance notifications terminated. We would like to have this in place by June the first, and I'm gonna let Councilman Green speak now because he did speak with his trustees.
Uh, yes, there will be a monthly business conference made the nineteenth, that's a Sunday a week.
Sunday a week, the thirteenth?
May, what's that?
This Sunday is what?
It's the twelfth.
This Sunday is ten.
So, it's the twelfth.
The twelfth, the nineteenth would be the following.
May nineteenth, there will be a business conference starting at six o'clock at night. And it will be loaded on the participants that serve the conference.
To accept.
Our head motion.
To accept this proposal, and if accepted, I will get one of the trustees to sign off on this.
We, we'll have this in place if it's approved by you guys tonight to move forward with this. And maybe you have votes, draw up a more formal agreement that both parties can sign based on this information in front of you. And we're trying to get everything in place because we're getting ready to put the stage up. We'd like to start this on, on June the first, so that when we take the stage down, it immediately goes into that facility. So, just a consensus from the council to move forward with this and get votes and draw up a little, a small agreement.
Everyone understand the, the terms of the agreement and the purpose of? Maybe I'm not doing too good a job in our getting consensus, so I'm gonna ask you one by one, if you're agree, agreeing to this.
Do we have to vote on this, Dan?
No, just a consensus. I don't think you have to vote. Mr. Franklin?
I'm all for it. I just wanna make sure that as we enter into agreement, that the, there's not any sodium issues or anything like that. But also, it's valid storage property if it's.
It's a garage, so it's just, we use, we do that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that would be my only concern at all. It seems to be very, you know, close by where we're using it, then, you know, if, if the church is not gonna use it, then, you know, if we do not utilize this place, the only other question would be that we need to, have, or we're having a security concern as far as, we need to put in account detectors or, you know, that type of stuff. I'm not sure that would be, the only other thought that I would have about it, but I'm, I'm good for, let's get down the road and have something ready for the, whatever Robert called the business council or whatever the church do. If, even if the trustees can consider, make them offer it and get it out there for them. Yes.
Okay, you hear that?
Yes, I, if I got that. Councilman Smith?
Uh, question. Kathy, the, I know the, the current facility we're running month to month, is that correct? Okay, and the savings, and I believe there is a savings associated?
Yes, sir. Currently for this current year, we're after, we, we, our contract is for thirty-one-twenty. And we had some discounts earlier on when we started that. So, I don't know for sure how much it would go up effective July one if we did not do this. But from the thirty-one-twenty to twelve-hundred is what you say.
Okay, and then the material that we are, to, to Mr. Franklin's question, the material is being stored. Do we have an idea what value that would be if it should have to be destroyed, or?
Yes, sir.
And we do have appropriate insurance covering that and everything on the sale?
Um, when we built the stage and everything, we had the cost of that, I had placed that, our portable equipment through the league's insurance that the town has. And because it is a mobile stage and it's not secure at the town site, so if anything happens to recover, would that value?
Thank you. Mine's ridiculous.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, I'm good.
Mr. Green?
The church does have insurance, ten thousand dollars. And I don't know what town, but the, the stage is not valued at over ten thousand dollars. But, and yes, I'm agreeable with this. This is reasonable to the community. That's all we're trying to do, just help out. And we're glad to do that.
I like it, and I'd like to commend Robert on putting his time and effort into helping us. This sounds like a great space, and it sounds like a great cost savings for us too, so I'm going for it. Appreciate that, Robert.
Well, well done. And I, I agree. I'm for it. Okay. So, we'll proceed. Thank you, Robert.
Alright, next section under announcements. I do have one announcement for this evening. I was informed by the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department Chief Deputy Rad Stanley, Thaddeus Tivoli. And we have a personal, personnel change in Louisville that we will have for the, towards the end of this month. Corporal Dowd, who has been the corporal for us for the past two years in, in our community policing program, is being reassigned. And we are getting a new, newly promoted corporal. His name is Eric Osborne. He has been with the community policing program in traffic in Clements. So, he will be coming on board in Louisville. There's gonna be a transition period. I believe that Corporal Dowd's last day with us is approximately the twenty-fifth of the month. So, that's what I have to announce.
And, and just to refresh memories, Corporal Dowd is the lead deputy in our community police force here.
That's correct.
And the name again of the.
Eric Osborne.
Osborne.
Would you also assume the leadership position?
Yes.
So, he will be our, your new man?
Yes.
He'll probably come in as corporal.
Yes, sir. He is being promoted to corporal.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Next item?
Okay, and we are again, for the good of the order, back to public comments.
The second opportunity in tonight's meeting for the public to come forward and address council. Uh, once again, the same rules apply. I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name, your address. Let in your comments to three minutes. And as always, we're here to listen, get your input. Uh, we do not enter into discussion or debate about the, of the comments. So, is there anyone that'd like to address council this time? We have no one. Uh, we do have the, the written forms as before, and you can pass your comments along if that matters. So, we'll close the public comment, and we'll proceed to enter comments.
I, I'd just like to really thank the Civic Club for the fair and square this last weekend. It was, you know, they really worked their tails off, and of course, it was the first time, so there were some, you know, the little bumps in the roads here and there, but I thought it was very, very good. It was, it was great. The spirit was great. I was glad to see it. I really hope that it, you know, really takes hold. And, and they, they just really, and particularly Donna and Tom, Tom Waltrip and Donna.
Water.
Water. Yep, I mean, they both, they absolutely gave their heart and soul to it. So, I'd just like to acknowledge them in that. It was, it was, it was great.
Very good. Thank you for that acknowledgement from, and I think that we all agree, especially for those that were able to attend. It was a, a very nice event. The, the weather cooperated even better. It didn't, didn't stop some hardy souls from participating in the, in the dunking booth. Adventureous souls, I should say.
Some foolish people.
We will, we will thank you to the intelligence, but.
Basically, it's both for yourself.
Well, we've had a member of Doggie's Stu's up there with their earlier, isn't he?
Mr. Warren was our.
Well, we do appreciate really and truly what the, the Civic Club, not only what they did on that occasion, but certainly what they've done for our community over the years. They've been an enormous part for this town, and we, we have so many things to thank them for. Everything from the events that they put on, or have sponsored, to, to sponsorship programs for the youth of, of our area. And, and that basically, I think, if history serves me correct, they were basically responsible for the initiation of the effort to incorporate this family some twenty years plus. So, kudos out to our Civic Club. Thank you. Any other comments by councilmen?
I just wanna say, you know, thanks to the staff, the manager, the finance officer, and, and the staff for, I mean, we've been meeting on the budget for, for weeks.
Five weeks.
Five weeks, and obviously, as you can sense, there's a lot of passion about this budget and responsibility. So, I know we've put the staff through a lot of hoops and, and probably still got some more hard questions to look at, but that's what makes this town unique. So, I thank you. Thank you for the work.
Very good. Well said. Anyone else have anything to say? Well, we will entertain our motion for adjournment.
That motion is adjourned.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
We are adjourned.